Thank you. Good morning. We will start. I'm councillor Pete Marland. I'm co-chair of the South East, no, South Midlands Authorities Board. We are not expecting a fire alarm this morning, but in the event of alarm sounding during the meeting, use that door, leave, you'll be shown to an assembly point and you'll be told when it's safe to return to the building. A supply of today's papers are available on the mod.gov pages of the Milton Keynes Council website. Welcome introduction and apologies. I've had an apologies from councillor Zerny who's been substituted by councillor Baker. Members present, we'll just go through because I think we've got some people online. So Mark, do you want to introduce yourself?
Thank you. Chair councillor Mark Arnold, leader of West North Hants Council.
Martin.
Councillor Martin Grievous, leader of North North Hants Council.
Jim.
Jim Weir, Deputy Mayor councillor Bedford. Not in the east, Bedford Borough Council.
John.
Hi, John Baker, cabinet member for finance and highways at Central Bedfordshire Council.
Yeah, Hazel.
Hazel Simmons, leader of Luton Council.
And Jason. Jason Longhurst, Chair of the South Midlands or South East or whatever business board. Thank you. A number of officers are present and if you are going to speak, it would be great if you could introduce yourselves for that item, but we will save time as there are many of you. We'll move on to the second item, which is minutes. Am I okay to sign the minutes of the meeting held on the 16th of September? I will take silence as a sent. Fantastic. We'll move on to item three then, declarations of interests. Do any members or officers present have any interests or declarable interests on the items to be just transacted today that aren't already declared in your declarations of interests? No, super fantastic. Okay, we'll move on to item four substantive item, the Get South Midlands Working Update. Vicky.
Thank you, Chair. And just to introduce myself, Vicky Lamuka, Head of Economic Growth at West North Hants Council. So we've brought a few updates on the Get South Midlands Working Plan. Is it a bit miffly or is it all right? Okay, all right. Just are you all right, John? You can hear it all right. Thank you. So the Get South Midlands Working Plan is part of the government's Get Britain Working White Paper, an initiative to get to reduce economic inactivity levels and see the employment rate across the country get to 80%. We were given funding as the South Midlands earlier in the year to develop a local Get South Midlands Working Plan. Back in July, we did a draft of this plan, which we shared with leaders and we've now sort of finalized the plan and attached to the paper today is that final draft of the plan. So just to sort of highlight some of the sort of progress to date, we did appoint GC Insights to work with us as a group of officers working alongside also colleagues from the Integrated Care Boards and also from DWP. The aim is that the plan is signed off by all three organisations, so the local authorities, the two ICBs and also DWP. We've both been working closely together since the summer, developing the plan. Over the sort of September period, we went out to do engagement with both residents, businesses and the voluntary sector. And the consultants have worked hard with us to put the plan together. So I won't go into all the detail in the plan, but under 4.1 in the report is the kind of plan on a page or there an overview of the plan, which highlights what the kind of key issues and drivers are behind the plan. And one of the sort of key things is that as at sort of November 25, in order for us to achieve the 80% employment rate, we need to get sort of 30, just over 34,000 people back into work. And then as you look at different groups and cohorts, that kind of, that sort of varies by sort of age and gender and other characteristics as well. So as part of the plan, we've highlighted four priority cohorts to support. So that includes NEETS and young people, including care leavers, those who are in ill health, particularly with sort of long-term health conditions, disabilities, or those experienced an episode of planned or unplanned care, the long-term unemployed, as well as inclusion groups. So in terms of inclusion groups, looking at those facing multiple overlapping disadvantages. So the strategic mission is to set out that the partnership will work together to create a system to support employment in the South Midlands, doing that by sort of strengthening the governance capacity and delivery of organisations working in this space, ensuring that we can enhance employer engagement and community engagement, and really focusing on a person-centred integrated approach to service delivery. So there are a number of priority actions outlined in the plan and they sort of fall into three broad categories. Wider interventions to support participation, so looking at some of the challenges which are barriers to people finding employment, whether that be sort of challenges such as housing and transport, interventions that can enable participation and improve access to services, as well as helping participation by sort of developing targeted interventions. So for example, the Connect to Work programme that we've recently launched. The plan sort of highlights priority actions, particularly over the next two years. And the proposal is that the sort of group that has been working on the development of the plan will work together as a partnership group to oversee the implementation of the plan. Under 5.1 in the report, there is a diagram which sort of highlights sort of who would be members of that partnership group and how it would report back to this group, as well as to the DWP and the Integrated Care Boards. So the recommendations for this report are that the board look to endorse the plan so that we can sort of publish it as once we've got also the approval from DWP and the Integrated Care Boards, which is sort of happening over a similar timescale, and that you support the recommendation that we have a partnership board, which will be made up of sort of key stakeholders to support the delivery and implementation of the plan. And the final recommendation is that the board nominate an employment and skills lead to champion and be the lead board member for the Get Britain Working or Get South Midlands Working activity, as well as Connect to Work. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So that's great. Are there any comments? And I know Martin has previously expressed a slight wish to be appointed as the as the skills champion, but I know that he would also welcome sharing that role if anybody else would want to do it. So any comments, questions on the plan, schools champion, et cetera. Jim?
Yeah, thanks. Jim Weir, Bedford Borough Council, north, south, east and west. Just having read the report, I've got to, I've got to say, officers right across our region have done a fantastic job in pulling this information together. And I've learned something about Bedford by reading the report that I didn't actually know. And then I looked at everybody else's area and I thought, I wonder if everybody knows the detail of the employment and the economic structure. I'm sure we all do with as an overview, but I think the detail is worth keeping that document to hand to consult. So thanks to the officers for that. Cheers.
Do you have any other comments? Martin and then Marcel.
I seldom see a report from Vicky and her team that doesn't enlighten me as to information I didn't know. So yeah, I just agree with Jim on that.
Marcel.
Chair Marcel Quave, Chief Executant, Central Bedfordshire. Just making sure that we're linking this into any growth strategy that we do or don't adopt later on, because clearly there's a lot of things going on in our area and that provides an opportunity for these people that we're targeting. Just making sure that that link up is fully understood.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah, Marcel has just been to the punch from the South Midlands Business Board perspective. I think the content of this and getting this granular detail into private sector, I think is quite essential. So again, I think the Business Board is keen that it plays an economic role, but actually it's got to hit into that day-to-day stuff as well. So I'd praise the officers and it's good when we see public sector information like this come forward that actually we can then collectively group around. So I'd encourage that and how we look to adopt.
Thank you. Any more comments, John?
Question more than the comment. This report makes reference to the ICBs. And clearly, if we're gonna, if the aim of the game of this, this exercise is to help people who are disabled get back to work or at least enter the workplace and overcome challenges to do so, how keen have the ICBs been to engage with this process more than just playing lip service, providing a few reports, giving warm words? Are there any kind of positive actions that you think the ICBs can actually carry out to move things forward?
Yeah, so just in terms of the two ICBs, they have been really fully engaged with the process. So they've been part of the sort of working group, if you like, developing the the report, work and the sort of work and health agenda, which this sort of obviously really closely works to, is some, is one of their sort of current sort of pillars of activity. And I would say that sort of both ICBs have been sort of fully supportive. There are sort of activities that they and we are already looking at as a collective, where we can look at sort of further integration to sort of help with some of this. So thinking about things through, for example, our Connect to Work programme, where we look at things like, can we co-locate employment advisers within sort of health spaces and things like that, so that there's a more joined up service for people who are accessing health support, but who are looking and wanting work and how we can support them into work. We're also sort of exploring kind of systems and data side of things in terms of, you know, how do we share data more effectively to, you know, help and support from the person centred approach. So people aren't having to sort of keep retelling their story, whether that's visiting a health, you know, sort of a part of the health service, or whether that's sort of, you know, sort of, you know, someone supporting them from the employment side. So it's probably also worth saying that in both ICBs, we have a work and health stewardship partnership. So the BLMK one has been sort of established for some time and the Northamptonshire one launched a couple of weeks ago. And that's bringing together key actors from both sort of health, the VCSE sector and wider to look at this agenda and how we can implement some of this activity. So hopefully we've got, you know, we've got some kind of real sort of support from our colleagues in health, recognising that they're going through a lot of change at the moment, but they have been supportive even through that process.
Michael?
Thank you, Chair. Just on the issue of the NHS's contribution to this agenda, I think I mentioned previously that we've had a lot of success with children who've got complex needs. And the NHS in that context is playing a very specific role in effectively challenging the healthcare system to make sure that an individual has had all of the things that were are needed put in place. And, you know, sometimes there's a tendency, working with the NHS, for it to drift off a bit into broad conversations. And I do think there's a specific piece of work that you'd be well played, well advised, take advantage of. I'm happy to share information about what we've done in Bedfordshire, Luton, Milton Keynes area. It's been really high impact and I'd really recommend it.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions? Oh, Hazel, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Bearing in mind the kind of 19,000 jobs that Luton has to create in this, this programme, I'm happy to work with Martin if he wants somebody else to share the board role and take this forward.
Super. I see a nod there, Martin. Good stuff. Excellent. Great. I don't see anything else, so we can take that as agreed in terms of what is on the report and in item D, appoint Hazel and Martin. Is that okay? Fantastic. Good. Move on to South Midlands Services Update. Ruth? I think you're online.
I am, yeah. Apologies.
Over to you.
Okay, thank you. Can everyone see? Shall I share the screen, Vicky, or you share on the screen? Perfect. I don't know whether anyone can see that. I can't see the slides at the moment. Can anyone else online see them?
Yeah, we can see them in the room. I don't know if you can see them online.
I can see them.
Yes, we can. Okay, must just be me then. That's fine. Okay, well, I've got my own slides here. So if I just go through the slides, Vicky, and then I'll just tell you when to click next, if that's okay. So Ruth Rowan, I'm the Growth Hub Manager for the South Midlands Growth Hub. I'm also representing the report update for the Careers Hub and also Connect to Work this morning. So I'll just run through my slides and if anyone's got any questions. So third slide, please, Vicky. Just a quick update from the South Midlands Growth Hub. We have a huge amount of activity going on, as we always have over the last few years. You can see here just a little selection of what we do as a small team of 10. You can see here that we have our core services, which are our business support, our one-to-one advisor support, also our events profile, that we do a huge amount of events across the region and we don't do anything in isolation. We do everything in partnership with the public sector and also the private sector. You can see there that we successfully are into our second year of our Our Within Expert, which has worked extremely well, where we pull the private sector experts in to offer their services pro bono to businesses across the region. So we currently have AI recruitment and paid ad sales strategy, marketing, we're just an HR, and we're also looking at launching Rural and some other subjects, depending on sort of government announcements over the next few days. We have the Lord Lieutenant's Mentoring Programme on the right-hand side there, which is currently working with the Lord Lieutenant's Network in Northamptonshire, but we are looking to roll that out across the rest of the South Midlands over the next few months, which is very exciting. We have our resource library, where all of our partners across the South Midlands can share the activity that they have available. We do a huge amount of referrals to partners all across the region and also nationally to programmes. You can see there as well, we have also launched the grant, which is our South Midlands Capital Grant, which is our capital growth grant and our micro capital grant, where we've already seen that was launched last week. We've already seen a waiting list of over 120 businesses and we are having lots of expressions of interest in. Very positively, they are very well spread across the region as well, which, which is good to see. Slide four, please. Here's just a quick update. You can see just some of the activities that we deliver. We are regularly at events two or three times a week across the region. We held our big Show Me Success event in Silverstone, which was really exciting to celebrate the successes of our Growing Innovation and Resilience Innovation Grant. You can see there the allocations on the right-hand side. We have just finalized and are currently awarding grants for Western North Hants Council's UK Shared Prosperity Fund. We have called that programme Driving Innovation. We saw a massive application level for this grant. We had a 120 expressions of interest. We saw 56 full applications with the limited amount of 340,000 that we were able to award. We were, we've managed to award 23 grants out of the 56. If we had more money, we had 50 out of the 56 past the grant process. So it would have been brilliant to fund those businesses. And as you can see there, you know, 782,000 of private sector match. So what this really does show you is that when we, when we offer grants programmes with, across the region, we also see a huge amount of investment from the businesses themselves as well. The Growth Hub, we've been doing grants programmes for many years. We've, we've done grants programmes for, for the whole of the South Midlands, for Milton Keynes, for Western North Hants and for, for other areas. And we're really excited to, to be doing the, the next grant over the next three years across the region. Slide five, please. Just a quick update on where we are. So obviously you're all aware that we're funded by national government and you can see here, so we are in November, so we still have four months left of the year. And you can see that our targets are absolutely on target to, to exceed those this year, which is really, really exciting. And again, what I would like to point out is that last year and the previous years, when we have hit targets, we've had additional funding through UK Shared Prosperity for multiple areas, through European funding. This has been our first year when we have only had a little bit of UK Shared Prosperity money in Western North Hants only. So to achieve some of these targets is, is really brilliant for the team. You can see there in Bedford, we've hit 97%, Central Beds, Luton, North North Hants, we're well over 50% of the way. In Milton Keynes, we have hit 100% already. And in Western North Hants, you can see there that we have exceeded that. Again, mindful just to, just to remind everyone, we have additional UK Shared Prosperity money in Western North Hants. So that, that would sort of, you know, say why we're over that 100% in that area. I'm really hopeful that by the time we get to the end of March, that we would nearly have doubled our target opportunities in, in multiple areas across the region. So that's really exciting for the team. It shows that businesses know who we are. They know the value of what we deliver. And also that we are really working closely with partners across the region. So people are regularly knocking on our door to be part of their event, to be part of their delivery, which is really exciting. And I think bringing the private sector in to support the delivery, to widen that opportunity to businesses across the region has really worked. Slide six, please. Just a final bit of an update from the Growth Hub part of this report is that we, as the South Midlands Growth Hub, we are a cluster lead. So there are 12 cluster leads across the country and we head up this sort of Oxford to Cambridge cluster. What we have commissioned, and it's been an absolutely brilliant document, is that we have commissioned a cluster five-year impact report. So this shows us the impact that Growth Hubs from Oxfordshire, Beckenhamshire, Northamptonshire and Bedfordshire, Cambridgeshire, Norfolk and Suffolk have had across that region. You can just see some of the highlights there of some of that data. So you can see there nearly 100,000 businesses supported, nearly 200,000 hours of business support, huge amount of jobs created, but also really importantly on there is jobs safeguarded as well. Exciting that this report hasn't been launched yet. We are having an official launch in Westminster in January. And we are just looking at having a couple of representatives from this group to attend that event. So if anybody is interested in representing the South Midlands Authorities at that event, then please let us know. But as soon as we've launched the report, everyone will be given copies. We have an executive summary. We have a sort of four-page brochure, which actually highlights what we've achieved across the South Midlands and we will be distributing those as well across the region. So that's an update from the Growth Hub. The next update we have is the South Midlands Careers Hub. So if I can just go down to slide eight there, as you can see, that these are the Gatsby benchmarks, building careers for young people. What I will say is that the Careers Hub held a very, very successful conference in September. Headlines, 150 people in the room. There was teachers, SLTs, providers and businesses. And it was really about championing the improvement in the careers education. And it was bringing those people together to learn together. And the key priority for the Careers Hub, as I'm sure you're all aware, is the emphasis on work experience, so that every young person can access work experience annually. So that's a real focus point for the Careers Hub at the moment. So that, that event was very much about work experience, sharing best practice. And it was just really great to build on the last few years of the sort of development of the Careers Hub, so that you can see the real partnerships that are working there. If we can just have the next slide, slide number nine, please, Vicky, that would be great. You can see there that the Gatsby benchmark comparisons per local authority, the national average is up there. And then you can see there where the South Midlands Hub average is there as well. So the team again are working really, really hard. Again, a very small team, working in partnership with sort of shared roles across the region with, with colleges and local authorities. You can see here on slide 10, that they, South Midlands Parent and Career Survey was launched. They've seen a great response to this. 5,978 responses received by parents and carers, 53 mainstream schools shared the survey. That just shows the commitment that we've got for the Careers Hub, for the schools across the region. And you can see some of the key findings there in confidence gap and 53% would encourage their child to consider an apprenticeship. Again, this is all fitting really nicely in with sort of Get Britain Working and also with Connect to Work. How to access support, so 68% of carers did not feel confident about how they could ask for support from their child's school regarding future options. So again, a real place for the Careers Hub to sort of develop this information. And local opportunities, so 90% of parents and carers felt they either did not have access or needed more information about local career and employment opportunities. I think this really shows us that we, by pulling the Careers Hub, the Growth Hub, Connect to Work, we're obviously working on local skills improvement plan as a team, bringing that business and skills together, really closing that gap for young people for the future as well. Slide 11, please, thank you. So you can see here just some new insights for future skills questionnaires that are over 50 schools. You can see how many students have completed those and some of the key findings there from some of the outcomes from that questionnaire. And then just slide 12, you can see there some of the great activity that has been going on across the region through the Careers Hub as well. Just that, that real partnership working, bringing the businesses and the education sector together. Moving on to slide 13, just to touch on Connect to Work. So Connect to Work update, there's been lots going on in the background, as you're all aware. Grant funding agreements have now been signed, which is, which is really exciting. And there was a job fair in MK, so Milton Keynes in September. This was very much a soft launch of Connect to Work. It was great to see the six areas coming together to launch. The team spoke to so many interested people about the programme. They've received 250 EOI's so far. They held their first training for the delivery team on the 13th of November, where over 50 people gathered in Flitwick across the six geographical areas. And some areas are now live delivering Connect to Work and taking inquiries. And all should be live by Christmas. I think all roles now that are needed to be recruited are now recruited there. And I know we were pleased to see one of our team moving over to Careers Hub, which is, to Connect to Work, sorry, which, which really shows that sort of linkage across the programmes. And just the slide 14, you can see just some of the, the marketing assets that have gone out to pro-connect work across the region, just some pictures from the MK Job Show. So that's the update for the South Midlands Services, if anyone's got any questions.
Fantastic. Any questions, comments? That was very comprehensive. No? Jim?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for that, Ruth. Just looking at the benchmarks, measurements against national, apart from a stable careers programme, Benchmark One and Benchmark Three, addressing the needs of each student, all the other indices, the other six are below the national average. And I know that the overall programme will be designed to, to improve on this, but I wondered one specifically, personal guidance. How, how do you propose to tackle that? Because it, it seems a bit esoteric. It's not, it's not something you can hang your hat on and say, we're going to do this and we're going to do that. What, what are your thoughts on that, please?
I'm going to push that back actually to Vicky, if that's okay. Vicky, I don't know where you've got any thoughts on that. It's a shame that unfortunately Avon, who is the lead in the Careers Hub, couldn't be with us today. So I wouldn't want to answer on her behalf, but I can take that question away and get her to, to send a written answer to that. But Vicky, have you got any thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to, to answer that. So I think the first thing to say, just in terms of the benchmarks against the national, is that we are one of the youngest careers hub in the network. So actually, kind of, kind of from where we've come from and where we are now in relation to, you know, to kind of the other careers hubs, actually we've seen great improvement, if you like. to kind of the other careers hubs, actually, we've seen great improvement, if you like. So hopefully, we will soon be kind of at least at the average, if not more. In terms of some of the sort of variance in those benchmarks, certainly in terms of the geographical variances for that, that kind of depends on a number of factors. So for example, in central Bedfordshire, they have middle schools. And middle schools are, you know, sort of a smaller sort of age range. And therefore, sort of their ability to achieve some of the benchmarks is different to the kind of full-on secondary schools. We've also seen sort of challenges in some schools where we've seen high career leader turnover. And that's kind of impacted on some of the benchmarks. But absolutely each year, we, you know, we sit down with the sort of careers and enterprise company who fund us to look at, well, which benchmarks do we need to look at improving on? And how can we support our schools to do that? So the role of the careers hub is very much about providing that capacity support for schools. So putting on training, you know, targeted interventions to try and improve. Because sometimes we find it's one or two schools that are sort of causing that sort of impact on benchmarks. It is probably also worth saying that there's been quite a bit of sort of update in the benchmarks. So there's been sort of statutory updates for this academic year in those benchmarks. So we will probably see sort of changes to sort of the school's ability to achieve some of them because the goalposts have changed. So this is kind of the last report we'll see before the kind of new benchmarks are measured against. But I mean, the encouraging thing is that we are seeing particularly in things, you know, sort of things like, you know, encounters with the workplace and things like that, that we are sort of seeing that sort of, you know, improvement in benchmarks over time.
Any other comments, Marcel?
Thank you. Just a quick one, the graphs that were on the presentation are slightly different to some of the graphs in the report. And I wonder if one's more up to date than the other, but it would be possible to share the slide deck.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Adele?
Adele Wiley, North Northants Council. So we will help to raise awareness of the new grant schemes. But we just wondered what other additional activities are planned to promote those schemes in areas? For example, North Northamptonshire, where we don't have as much access. So whether there's going to be any targeted local advertising that we could support with?
Yeah, absolutely. So all of the local authorities were sent out press packs to promote the programme. And thank you very much to Central Bedford, West Northants and Milton Keynes. They all put it straight on their social media, so that's really, really helpful. And I think that's worked really hard to sort of get the inquiries coming in their area. So that should have gone to the economic development team, but we can share that wider if need be. So that's obviously gone out to everybody. What we are looking at doing is looking at the key priorities of each of the six areas. So for example, if you're looking at sort of priorities around High Street, for example, in North Northants, we are looking at doing targeted marketing around case studies for those types of sector of businesses. So we're not being sector-specific or geography-specific. But what we are doing is looking at our marketing to try and steer it that way. So yes, absolutely. And we'll be using some real examples within North Northants as well. But so far, we have seen a good turnout of, I can't tell you the exact figures, but we have seen a good turnout of expressions of interest from North Northants at least.
Fantastic. Do you have any more comments, questions? No? Brilliant, okay. We can note that and agree the updates presented in the paper. Fantastic. Thank you, Ruth. We'll come to the South Midlands Services Financial Report then, Vicky.
Thank you, Chair. So this report plans to sort of build on the services update that Ruth's provided and sort of have a look at the sort of financial position. So this report aims to do a few things. One, provide the outturn for last financial year. Secondly, look at the forecast position for the current year. And also sort of provides a proposed budget for next financial year as well. And then additionally, look at the reserves that we hold and some potential options around the future use of reserves as well. So in terms of the 2425 budget, which was approved back in sort of February 2024, we initially had a budget approved of 1.84 million. And you can see in the table under 3.1, Table One, that actually our sort of outturn was 1.5 million. So one of the things when West Northants took over as the accountable body for the services is that we committed to sort of financial sustainability, to sort of move towards financial sustainability and to sort of reduce the sort of requirement to use reserves and sort of, you know, sort of where we could to sort of reduce any unnecessary expenditure. So 3.2 just kind of highlights some of the kind of key variances from that original budget. One of the things to sort of say in terms of the underspend there is that the sort of main area was on staff vacancies. And that was particularly in the Careers Hub. When we took the Careers Hub over, the sort of strategic hub lead role was vacant. And that was vacant for quite a few months. So that was kind of one of the key contributing factors there. As well as, you know, we were setting a budget before we'd taken the services over. And so we were sort of estimating certain things. And actually, the good news is that some of those things actually sort of cost less than what we originally thought. The other thing to sort of say about last year's budget is that that 1.8 million initial budget was signed off on the basis that we would require 485,000 of reserves to balance that budget. What you can see in the table in terms of what the budget was funded by in the end is that we didn't actually need to use any of those reserves in the end. That was because of a couple of things. One, we, that the interest rate, sort of the interest that we forecast as income. So one of the income streams that the services use is the interest on balances held by the South Midlands. That was slightly higher than what was initially forecast. And the team also secured some additional funding. And that was namely sort of additional UK Shared Prosperity funding, as well as income relating to support that the team provided for the Local Skills Improvement Plan and some sponsorship from events and a programme that they delivered for Milton Keynes Council as well. So when we look forward then to 2526, which is the current year, earlier in the year, so back in January, the board signed or approved a balanced budget of 1.5 million pounds. And that included the use of up to 300,000 pounds of reserves. The table in 4.2 highlights the current financial forecast at the end of period six. The, there are a couple of things that have changed sort of since we approved the budget back in January. Two things basically, one is that Connect to Work is sort of a new programme for the South Midlands. So what we have done for the purposes of this report is put the income and the expenditure in. They net each other off. So in terms of Connect to Work, some of that funding sort of remains within the West Northamptonshire for the Accountable Body team and West Northants delivery. But of course, the rest of it is also then sort of passported across to the other five authorities for their role in the delivery of the programme. And we also secured the Get South Midlands Working Plan funding. So that's where the budget has kind of jumped from sort of 1.5 million to the sort of 4.2 million. So the expected outturn is 4.187, so sort of a variance of 65,000, so an underspend of 65. And that variance is mainly around sort of staff vacancies. And you can see in the table sort of where that's, where that funding is coming from. And I guess the key thing just to highlight is that we still anticipate that we will need to use some reserves to fund the budget for this year. But the good news is that that figure currently is estimated at around 146,000 rather than the initial 300. And, you know, if the team continue to sort of secure additional income, as they kind of have done, that might even be in a better position by the time we get to year end. So section five then looks at the proposed budget for the 2627 financial year. At the time of preparing this budget, we haven't had confirmation from sort of the two main government funders of services. So that's the Growth Hub and the Careers Hub. However, the Careers Hub works on academic years, so they have got their funding confirmed till August 26. And there is no indication that they will have any reductions beyond that. So we've made the assumption that their funding will continue at the same level. And with the Growth Hub, they did get confirmation in the spending review earlier in the year that Growth Hubs would have funding for another three years. They are just waiting for confirmation of exactly how much that will be for next year. However, from the intelligence Ruth has had to date, it's reasonable to assume that it will be at a similar level to this year. So that's kind of the assumption that we have built that on. Similarly, with the match funders for the Careers Hub, we have assumed similar levels of funding. However, UK Shared Prosperity funding, as we all know, will be ceasing in March. So we have sort of reduced income assumptions on the Growth Hub and Careers Hub. But we have put some sort of, we've put kind of modest targets in there in the hope that there will be sort of, you know, sort of other funding streams that they can kind of look to apply to and bid to. So the tables in 5.2 just provide an overview of the income and expenditure assumptions for next financial year. And with regards to kind of use of reserves under 6.4, what you can see there is that we currently anticipate that there would be a need to use some reserves next year, albeit at a reduced level from what it has been this year and the year before. And so currently, we're looking at sort of the requirement to need 124,000 of reserves. But hopefully, you can see from that table, and particularly when you look at what we've then actually required in year for last year and this year, that we are fully committed to sort of seeing these services come to full financial sustainability and that we are reducing that call on reserves year by year. So sort of just touching on the reserves then. So under 6.6, there is a table which outlines the current reserves for the South Midlands and the balances held. And I'll just talk through some of these and just some of the sort of proposals that we're sort of suggesting for the board's consideration. So the first one is the contingency reserve. And this is a reserve that we have held primarily for contingency purposes. When the services transferred over to West Northants, there was an agreement that in this reserve, we would retain at least a balance of 1 million pounds for any potential future sort of closure costs, including sort of redundancy and pension strain costs. And back at the time that that was agreed, there was a paper that was provided, which had sort of detail of sort of costings in there for that. The other thing that that reserve was therefore was to recognise that we often get decisions about government funding very late in the financial year and to enable us to kind of underwrite the kind of future years' worth of funding to be able to approve the budget before that's confirmed. And one of the things that we're proposing now that we've got the sort of Connect to Work programme, which is a 32 million pound programme, is that rather than sort of that being a sort of 1 million pound minimum balance, that we increase that minimum balance to 3 million pounds to recognise the additional, the additional risks and cash flow liabilities with that additional programme. The second line in the table is actually a kind of part of the contingency reserve, but it's a proposal to hold a service delivery risk reserve of 300,000 pounds. Now, this year, we have got approval to use up to 300,000 pounds of reserves for the, for this year's budget. We don't think we will need to use that full amount. And for next year, we're looking at potentially needing up to 124,000. So our proposal is that rather than kind of having a sort of annual request for an amount of reserves to sort of potentially sort of balance the budget, that we have a risk reserve of 300,000, which takes the 300,000 from this year that we've already got approved to provide as a sort of shortfall against future years' budget setting. So we would only ever use up to that amount. And if there was any, if we had sort of surplus in any of the service budgets for sort of funding streams that hadn't got specific funding conditions like sponsorship or commercial income, we would use that to replenish this fund as a first port of call. And the proposal for this is to try and sort of, to sort of move the services towards financial sustainability. Just to sort of touch on the last two elements of the reserve funding. So Ruth's already talked about the sort of capital grants. So that's a ring-fenced amount for the capital grant scheme. And then finally, we have got about 2.6 million pounds of unallocated sort of growing places fund. The only thing it's worth probably saying about that is that the money was initially capital funding. And so that is likely to be seen as capital funding in that reserve. So the reserves have played a really key part in the sustainability of the services and clearly sort of some of that sort of risk mitigation of running the services and ensuring that they're sustainable and able to deliver successfully. However, we, on sort of closer assessment, there is the option that we could look at using a portion of the reserves to repurpose for regional economic development activity. So under 6.7, there are a couple of options outlined there for the board to consider regarding sort of future use of reserves. So the first option is whether the board would be minded to look at further exploration of the reserves and whether we could look at using a portion of those unringfenced reserves for another purpose. For example, we could look at something related to sort of local economic development within each of the six areas. We could look to support activity on the implementation of the South Midlands Economic Strategy or, you know, sort of other economic development priorities that the board might be minded to consider. There are some implications if we reduce the amount of reserves. And the first one to sort of flag is that because one of the income sources for the services is the interest earned on the balances held, if we reduce the balance of those reserves significantly, it would impact on the income that the services had. So for example, if we reduce the balance by two and a half million pounds on current interest rates, it could reduce the balance, could reduce the annual income for the services of about 100,000 pounds. The final element of the paper just looks at the final sort of outstanding loans. So when we took over the services, there were a few sort of final growing places fund loans. So that's namely Electric Corby, Silverstone Heritage and Bulwick Farm. And you can see under 7.1 how much sort of funding remains to be repaid and over what periods for those three loans. And that would get be paid into that unringfenced reserve that is held. And then sort of finally, just to say that Milton Keynes City Council's Democratic Services Team very kindly provide the secretariat support for the board. And this has been a fee of 5,000 per annum. So the other recommendation in the paper is that they transfer that funding for next year from the South Midlands Growth Board Fund, which Milton Keynes hold. And that's kind of what has been done for several years. So in conclusion, the board's asked to consider the proposed budget for next year, along with the proposed use of reserves that I mentioned, and consider options for future use of reserves. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Comments? John?
Thank you very much. So obviously, I'm new to this. I don't always attend these meetings. But I think I understand the basic principles, a 32 million pound Connect to Work scheme. This is a multi-year settlement. Has it been agreed by government? So is that okay? It's been agreed? Okay. So the money arrives and it gets spent. And therefore, I'm struggling to understand why you want to have a 3.2 million pound reserve for something that's been agreed. I mean, if it's been agreed, the money arrives and it gets spent. And if the money doesn't arrive, something doesn't happen and we all blame the government. So I'm struggling on the 3.2 million pounds. Scrolling down through the reserves, there's another 2.6 million pounds unallocated reserve. But actually, if I add that to the 3.2, you've essentially got a 6 million pound slush fund in the reserves here. Now, the reserves essentially are to cover, I guess, things you've agreed to do. You've got some capital expenditure, I think, you've got some grants that you promised. Okay, so that's an earmarked reserve. Or it's a reserve to essentially wind down the organisation. It does say that, to pay redundancy costs, pension costs, et cetera. My feeling on this, my first reflection, is for a board that mostly passports money to local authorities. And we've established, I think, that money essentially has been agreed by government, so we expect it to arrive. I'm struggling to see the need for 8.2 million pounds worth of reserves. That's just my opinion. I'm sure all the experts here are going to tell me that I'm wrong and there are lots of good reasons why I'm wrong. But I look forward to your feedback before I make any more comments, Chair.
Thank you. Martin?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And another meeting where I'm not going to mention a major highway scheme. But I am going to mention our high streets. So we desperately need to help our high streets, our small businesses and our night time economy. So anything we can do with some of this reserve fund to help with that, I think, would be very welcome. So anything we can do with some of this reserve fund to help with that, I think, would be very welcome.
Thank you. Did you have your hand up, Jim, or was that just sort of a randomly pointy finger as you went to touch your screen? Good. You've also bought a signed Steve Reid Build Baby Build baseball cap in silent auction. Well done. Vicky, who's come back on some of those things, just just on the point around reserves, obviously. Point D in terms of board agreeing, when we discussed at our pre-meeting and with the with the vice chair, with Vicky, I think what we agreed was we would bring this for a discussion, but it would probably be best that we agreed as a board, but we would have to agree as a board, to go away and have a reserves policy and look at those reserves and then bring a proper structured sort of policy back as opposed to debating what we should do with them on the hoof. Because I think there are a variance and spectrum of views from we should release that funds in very challenging economic times for for some of our councils. A million or a couple of million pounds to individual councils would go a long way to helping balanced budgets. And on the other, you know, on the other end, it's sort of like, let's spend it on X for the South Midlands. Maybe some somewhere in the middle, you know, we could do both. But I think we probably need to go away and have a discussion about what the reserves policy would be. So we've got to structure as opposed to individual discussions, Adele.
Thank you, Chair. I won't comment on the reserves then and what we could spend it upon. But in terms of, just in terms of the financial monitoring, so on paragraph four point three and table two, I think it'd be really helpful to show the expenditure to date at period six. So that would be really helpful. I think it would also be really helpful for visibility and accountability to report the various funding streams differently. So Connect to Work and the Careers Hub, et cetera, because they support really distinct and separate initiatives. So it'd be really helpful if we could see those in a different way. Just in terms of the reserves, so table three, as we've already said, there will be significant reserves, so over eight million pounds. And as you've, and she said, Vicky, the current agreement is a minimum of one million should remain available for any closure costs, for example. And obviously, the report proposes to increase that figure to over three million. And we just don't believe that there is the supporting information to quantify that financial exposure to the accountable body and justify any increase of over one million pounds. So, for example, the Connect to Work is a multi-year initiative, as we've just set out. And the peak of the initiative, the annual allocation was forecast to be ten million pounds, not thirty two million pounds. So moreover, each local authority would incur an element of financial risk around that while the programme is in operation. So that's when we made the payments, obviously, before the grant is received. West Northants isn't likely to make those payments until it's verified eligibility of the claims. So we think that risk is extremely low on that basis. But if there is serious concerns about that particular scheme, then we are able to take on the role of the accountable body for Connect to Work or move it to another local authority if that was a serious concern. So basically, we don't think that there is the evidence. We don't think that that's in place to support any reserves being over one million at this point. Thank you, Chair.
Super. Hang on, John. Vicky?
Yeah. Yeah. No, thank you all. So just sort of starting with John, and then I think that relates to sort of Adele's point about the reserves. So yeah, the million pounds was calculated at the point at which we transferred services based on the sort of number of staff that we had at the time and the services that transferred over. I think if, you know, in if we're going to look at options for the reserves and sort of reducing the balance to a more sort of minimum level, I think as the accountable body, you know, we've just got to kind of look at that risk piece in the sense of, you know, the sort of, you know, what does that current risk piece look like in terms of the sort of staff and the programmes that we currently host? And with the Connect to Work programme, so yes, it's over five years. So it's thirty two million pounds over five years. The funding is confirmed. The way that the funding flows is that we put in claims and claim the funding back, which is, you know, similar to to many of the schemes that we are used to. At the moment, the way that will work is that we, as the accountable body, need to pay out to all the other local authorities and then claim the funding back. So I suppose from an accountable body perspective, the sort of two things. One is, I suppose, that sort of cash flow implication. So absolutely, Adele, at sort of peak, you're looking at sort of ten million pounds over the year. And some of the claims are up to kind of, you know, three million pounds each collectively between us. And the other is, I suppose, just in in recognition of, should we hopefully never get any sort of clawback requests from DWP? And sort of, you know, trying to have that sort of risk approach, you know, for that programme. I suppose the other thing just to say is that what we what we still have as the South Midlands is is some of the legacy programmes that sit within the portfolio as well. So, for example, the Local Growth Fund, the Get Building Fund and sort of, you know, EU funds. And although they hopefully present far less risk, you know, now that those sort of programmes are sort of completed, you know, we have had some inquiries recently on on Local Growth Fund, for example. And it makes you realise, okay, you know, even though these programmes are nearly finished, you know, there are still recipients out there who've been in receipt in of sort of large, you know, portions of this funding. And, you know, should should we, you know, should we ever be in a position where sort of clawback was a risk on on any of those programmes? It's again sort of looking at risk. But sort of, you know, recognise the points that people are making. We're just sort of trying to get that balance of what, you know, what sort of reserves can we sort of look at doing something else with? And what do we, you know, what do we sort of need to retain sort of from a risk-based perspective to sort of run the services?
What I would suggest, rather than having a back and forth and a back and forth and a back and forth and a back and forth on reserves, is change D, because I think this is, I think you used the word risk about seven times there, Vicky. And as a former accountant, it is about managing risk and understanding risk, isn't it? As opposed to not taking risk. So I would say that we should probably ask you or colleagues from West Northants as the accountable body, not West Northants as the council, but as the accountable body, to work with the other authorities to develop a understood reserves and risk policy. Because obviously, what you're saying is, as the accountable body, you believe there is a certain risk. But obviously, that's not been that's not been circulated or or sort of socialised. And I think it's really important that everybody understands sort of how that calculation has been made. Because obviously, you'd either want to spend money or you want to return it, return it to, return it to council, return it to sort of member councils. So I'd say probably need to develop that reserves and risk policy as opposed to just building it up if that is agreeable to everybody. Good. Thank you. Yeah. Who did?
Laura.
Laura.
You covered the point, Chair. I would also just like to ask that, at the moment, papers being produced for this board go to an Economic Development Officers Group. On the reserves position and the budget, I would like to ask that they are circulated to chief executives.
I think that that's absolutely right. And probably in finance, it probably should also go to one five one officers and Treasury officers as well, if that is okay. Fantastic, John.
Thank you very much, Chair. So I just want to clarify, although I opened up here by talking about the results, I'm not against the idea of having reserves. And I do agree with the points being made. I just feel, I mean, for our council, we won't be handing out money until it's been brought back, given to us. So the risk, I think it's very important, you talk about risk, but we need to recognise what those real risks are. And also the point I was going to make, I agree with the reserves policy. I think actually, we need to have a good, honest conversation about actually, I think at a time when councils are being squeezed, we can't tell taxpayers that we've got eight point three million pounds of reserves and we're not really sure what we've got them. So I agree. That's a very good suggestion, Chair.
Thank you. I'll try my best, John. The, I think, I think therefore, in terms of the recommendations, I think we note and note A and B. I think we do endorse in principle the budget for twenty six, twenty seven. I would probably scrub the line and the planned use of reserves, because I don't think we're endorsing that. And then add new D, which would be ask West Northants as the accountable body to work with other authorities to develop a reserves and risk policy to ensure robust financial management. Vicky?
Thanks, Chair. The only thing I wanted to clarify was whether the three hundred thousand service delivery risk reserve was something that the board would be comfortable with to help us to plan for next year's budget or whether that is dependent on that wider policy being developed.
Ah, so you you assume that C. I mean, three hundred thousand, I don't think the three hundred thousand is sort of the general principle of the overall of the ultimately, if you need three hundred thousand to continue to deliver the services and is essentially a operational risk, I think that's slightly different to what we're talking about overall. And so I have, I have no problem with designating the three hundred thousand, because you've also indicated that you probably don't want to draw it down. And it's actually probably a carryover from last year anyway. So actually, what you're doing is bringing forward last year's last year's reserve and sort of and sort of moving it, moving it to twenty six, twenty seven. So actually, you're not creating a new reserve, you're just drawing, you're just drawing forward, you're just pulling forward last year's reserve, that right? Good. Well done. So probably on C then, I would change that to endorse in principle the budget for twenty six, twenty seven and bringing forward the the operational reserve of three hundred thousand. Is that okay? Good. Excellent. And E, which is very important, agree, agree five hundred thousand. No, agree, five hundred thousand, yeah, I agree, five thousand for the South Midlands Growth Board of Democratic Services. Are we agreed? Super. Item seven, Jason.
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully, everyone has now the opportunity to review the strategy. Not sure any direct Emma feedback we've had from authorities on that. From a business board perspective, I think this is one of the most focused outputs that the boards had in its first year, which we've literally just hit the one year marker on. From our perspective, the original consultant work that was done on this presented a quite bland, non-value proposal. And I think the work of the business board and officers has been very proactive to restructure this in a way that it doesn't just look like every other region in terms of a high-level strategic economic offer. I think also the additional focus here that this connects into the individual authority economic investment proposals, whether they're existing or coming online, has been quite critical to this. The final aspects, we're also sitting in an environment at the moment where we have the Oxcam prospectus. I attended the recent summit and there was a lot of side channel discussions also around economic zones, regions and other opportunities. And that just on one hand gives future opportunities that I see this document playing a critical role in giving us a baseline and sounding both to the local economic offers, but also an overarching economic prospectus as such back into various government departments. The critical one on that broader environment, if you look at the work that is now being generated out of things like the Supercluster Board, which is getting East West Rail funding, you've got the government leading on Oxcams, whatever it will be, debate again, plus the recent funding settlements. The reason I really say and would hope that we get endorsement today for this is we do need some foundation work that we can. And it slightly goes to your previous discussions about funding, that we're dealing with limited and declining funds. And the economic offer of this region, I still feel, is heavily overlooked. So when I sit with business board chairs from across the UK and we had a meeting last week with various ministers in London, we're in a unique position, yet we are still being totally and utterly underfunded in terms of that public-private relationship. So when you look at things like Cambridgeshire, Oxford, they're getting settlements at a minimum four, five hundred million into direct services as well as enablement work. I'll praise officers and the hub groups and would encourage that we keep that cross-regional working going when you look at the outputs from the hub work. Because again, some of those reports that have been presented today and certainly the cluster report just adds value to the private sector and encourages us to keep investing. And I think the key word we're missing at the moment is the ability to partner invest. And it's certainly a key word that I'm getting from Treasury colleagues, DBT, and I think MHCLG finally is on a path to start understanding that this has to be an integrated approach with public-private sectors. So the paper sets out the journey we've been on. The structure for me looks quite different from what we're seeing within other regions. And I think it's it's above my target of a seventy percent good summary of the collective assets and opportunities that we have. The work I'd like to encourage post this is that, if we can endorse it today, is that this goes forward to seek out and look at ways of triggering and hunting down new investments. Much of that will be dictated from the budget that we will hear tomorrow. But recent meetings do suggest there is a clear line of still this desire to stimulate off the back of a strong economy. And I think we still heavily underplay the sector strengths that we've got. Most areas that are benefiting are playing off one or two strong high-growth sectors. We've identified in this report, you've got at least seven primary high-growth sectors. And the final closing observation from this, you will see it with the grant launch that came out. The business board, again, is really encouraging across its sector groupings to really promote that. Because our unique position with micro and SME businesses, I think, is a future high-growth area that will bleed out of areas like Cambridge and Oxford. And at the moment, there's little targeted funding or support for those businesses to adjust, evolve. And I think you'll see a lot more from the private sector looking to encourage that. So more than happy to take any questions, but would put this forward to the board.
Thank you. Do you have any initial comments, questions? Martin?
A general comment really about the regional strength, the fact that this covers the whole of our area. So you've got Silverstone in there, you've got Luton Airport, you've got Bedford Universal and obviously Distribution in North Northamptonshire and including Nike, which you're going to hear a lot of in the next twelve, eighteen months. So that's that's why I think we are, you know, very strong in this, because we've got the strength across the whole of our area.
Thank you. I'm afraid I'm going to have to play bad cop, pantomime villain here. Because because of the lateness of seeing the report, our cabinet have not been able to sign it off, although there is a question about whether each of our executives would have to sign it off as well as an actual policy, because we would be bidding for money on the policy. Mainly, it's related to the fact that since all the work has been done, the government have announced two new towns or two potential new towns in the area. One is obviously Milton Keynes and the other is Thamesford. And to be very clear, that the government have announced that those new towns are not housing opportunities. They are economic and growth opportunities, of which housing plays a part. And they are not referenced at all in the report. And that is a big miss in terms of in terms of how we are corralling and sort of pushing the sector. So got no problem with sort of the general direction of it, but I think it does need to go back and be looked at again. The other comment on when that's been done is I would say that I think, my personal view is, I think the opportunity and scale of the universal inward investment is somewhat underplayed in the document. It is going to, I genuinely think it's not reflective in the document that this is the biggest inward investment that this country has ever seen. And the potential of that is huge. We're talking about eight million visitors a year. That will have massive consequences for Milton Keynes, for the south of Northamptonshire, for Luton, Luton Airport. And I think it is effectively put on the same level as some other sectors. And I don't think it is on the, I don't think it is on the same level. I think we need to reflect that. And what I don't think is enough, and I know, I do know it was fed back from a number of organisations. And what I don't think is enough, and I, and I know, I do know it was fed back from a number of organisations during the initial report, is I don't, I think it also underplays the importance of the defence sector on our region. And again, considering that is a huge sector with huge revenues that has access to huge amounts of government capital, when other players, other, other sectors are nice and fantastic and amazing, but do not have the access to government capital in the same way that the defence industry does. I think that again is a huge sort of, a huge understatement of the importance to this region. Not that it isn't mentioned, but I think in terms of volume, there are some things that are quite high in volume or equal in volume to things that will drive a huge amount of economic growth in the, in the region over the next twenty years. So I don't, I don't want to say this is not an economic strategy that isn't in the right direction, but just because it came to us so late. And I think the first time I actually saw the document at all was five days before publication. I just think it needs to go back and 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 sort of, the Business Board maybe need to reflect on that. And who wrote the report probably need to reflect on that. I think that's, that's quite important. And so I can't, it's not that I don't endorse the direction, but I, I think that those, those three things in particular need a lot of, a lot more work, if that's helpful to people. Marcel.
Thank you. So I think it's a good report. I think there are some, there's some emphasis change needed perhaps, particularly in in defence. But I would say that given what goes on in central Bedfordshire. The one sector and your champion sectors, and I guess there's a danger that we overwhelm, you know, everything's a champion. Obviously, construction is a massive industry here, given all this growth. I don't know, it's a facilitator to all this growth, but it is a massive thing. And then if you then layer in the kind of potential of new towns, obviously, construction is going to be a big challenge for us. Now, I'm not sure whether they're going to have the workforce to build East West Rail, Universal and two new towns. But linking back to our previous conversation about how we get people into work, that is an area that I think we've, we've got huge potential.
Yep, I, I think that's right. I mean, I've made this point to ministers, but I've also, I made it last week at a Newtown summit, is that I find it bizarre that when a business application, be it logistics or be it, be it anything, is brought to planning committees, they have to have an economic impact assessment. And that economic impact assessment is obviously usually quite high in this region. You never have to append economic impact assessments to housing applications. It's really strange because obviously they have an economic impact in upon themselves. So I, I do think that Marcel is absolutely right in terms of just, in terms of skills, in terms of the ability to train our own in this country, which is obviously a big opportunity, particularly, I think, in the, in what we discussed earlier, is you cannot get earth movers in this country since Brexit. You know, people who come and drive those big machines and flatten out the land to build houses on, the market for that is just apparently dead at the moment and can't find them. So training our own is really important. But yeah, I think the construction industry linked with the Newtown stuff, I think in particular, would be really, really helpful to go back and look at because it is a big, it's a, it's a big linkage. Adele.
Sorry, Chair, we could go on about all of the different sectors, but there's also something about the A I investment as well into North Northamptonshire and the quantum computing revolution. So I don't, I'm not sure that's mentioned within there, but I do think that that is a huge, huge billion pound investment into this area that we do need to highlight as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I could say more about A I and data centres, because I think a few might be coming to this region on on various sites. And I think we've all been given some heads up on on things like that. So I think, I think, yeah, that's important too. I, I certainly don't blame the board for this in any way. Or, you know, I think it's that sort of like, because we've seen, because politicians and perhaps again, the rest of the council or councillors have seen this so late in the day, it probably would have been helpful to have this discussion before it was brought to board for endorsement, because it probably just needs to go back and be, and be finessed, if that's okay, Jason.
I'd probably pick up, no, I think this is partly when it was released, so this was a draft. The key from where we picked this up, one, given it's a public forum, the probably appointed consultants not being economists hasn't helped. And I think the lift on the report by the cross input of the board has been significant in trying to get it to that position. I think also that time period, I think it was already twelve, fourteen months in when the board formed. So we are dealing with, as we always are with policy or strategy documents, a lag of at least eighteen months with the content base. It also lacks, I'd certainly say, the defence element. If you look at the data coming out of things like supercluster and their research, you know, we are missing certain elements of innovation. And I think there's a brief window that we should try and hit, that this is sort of there for spring next year as a launch document. I'll happily take those points away. I do share the one, defence, I think Universal, I think you've got to look at those broader economic benefits of how they land. From where we got to with this, the construction one's a challenging one, because it is just, it's the same answer on every aspect, which is as a strategic document, you normally wouldn't focus on that. It's a throwaway comment of you're going to have a lot of construction skills related jobs, especially with two new towns and the list goes on. How you play that into a strategic target of responding to it. I've got the same challenge in Cambridgeshire with their scale of growth, which is, it's underpinned by the local economic strategies in terms of high growth skills development on construction. So it's not to underplay, it's how we actually make it sit within a strategic document. But no, happily take those points away and see what we can bring back for a, an early revisit of this in the new year.
Laura.
Absolutely agree with the points that have been made around Universal and from Marcel on construction. So that's the business opportunity of construction and the skills. I wonder if we're also underplaying some of the challenges around energy, water, sewage, which will impact on the opportunities for businesses as well. That's actually quite a significant challenge across the Oxcam arc, is a significant challenge in Bedford at the moment. So I'm not, I'm not sure that features enough and what we would need to do. The other element is I don't see the resource element on on how we are going to deliver that. So it's got some timelines, but nothing around the resources that we will need in, in order to deliver the, this strategy.
Yeah, just on sort of like the South Midlands slash whatever economic strategy. I think, I think it's really important, because I think I made this when we were, when we were alep. And I think the government wanted the regional industrial strategies, remember, remember those. And I think, I think he was, I can't remember who did ours, was it Glebes or someone like that? Who, who came and I said, this just, this reads like it could be written anywhere. And what, what they've done is, not that this document was that, but what they've done is they've taken sort of West Midlands and deleted West Midlands and put in South East Midlands, because as far as I'm aware, everybody wants well paid jobs. Everyone wants high skilled jobs, everyone wants, everybody wants high end engineering. Nobody says, nobody says we want really shit jobs with really bad pay and to be, and to be low grade agricultural employment, please. I think Lincolnshire actually did say they wanted to be an agriculturally based, which is absolutely fine. Because actually, out of the forty two regional growth strategies, only Lincolnshire said that they wanted to be sort of agrarian. And I think that actually separated them from the crowd. What we've got in this region, and I think you mentioned it, is a huge U S P that doesn't get acknowledged or is becoming more acknowledged in central government. But sort of doesn't, we don't get the credit. And this is, this is, you see it actually in the Oxcam, Oxcam Investment Prospectus. Essentially, it's just all university projects for Oxford and Cambridge and Silverstone, which is absolutely right, because Silverstone is very important. But are you telling me that over the whole of the Oxford Cambridge arc, the only thing in this region that is an investment opportunity is, is Silverstone? So I absolutely get where you're coming from. But that thing about new towns, Universal, Luton Airport, construction, that's the thing that makes this area different to somewhere else, you know, the use of A I etcetera. But it's that U S P. And so I absolutely get the point around it's difficult, because everybody will say construction, construction is a challenge, Cambridge will say construction is a challenge, Manchester will say it, Plymouth will say it. But fundamentally, no area, no other area has two new towns that I think are a third, Marcel? John, I think it's a third of the total potential of the complete, all, all twelve new towns. In two of them, it's a third of the total potential of housing underneath and next to the biggest, the biggest single inward investment that we've ever had in this country alongside, alongside sort of the third, I think now the third biggest airport in the country that has other potential as well, particularly the, particularly the economic, particularly the E Z and the potential of Corby and the old ironworks and things like that. So I do think construction is a huge, huge sort of how you go away and talk to board members about how we land it as with Treasury as a investment opportunity, be that, because I know Manchester have set up like a skills college and things like that, haven't they? So it's how we then work with the higher, a higher and further education to actually land it as an opportunity through pension funds and things like that. I think that, that's the U S P as opposed, as opposed to everyone, everyone's got construction challenges. It's sort of like, if you're going to focus construction challenges, you'd focus them here, wouldn't you? And so I think that's the, I think that would be my, our change back to you as, as sort of Chair of the Board and to take that back to the board, if that's okay?
Yep, more than that, I think the key bit we're all agreeing on is the differentiators, this still undershoots. It's the balance of how we have a mechanism, we can discuss with government about new opportunities as well as, if we can aim at a window, I'd happily come back to the board of those elements, we would look at. Defence for me is the largest weakness of this, because it is such a high growth. We've got a thirty three percent uplift. The Newtown element, absolutely, again, I think that's so hot off the press. And certainly in a meeting last week, not only have you got the biggest chunk of deliverables, they sit in the top four target delivery schemes. So out of that long list, that priority, it's right at the top. So we do need to revisit that.
I think, yeah, I think it's really easy not to overlook, but to, like you say, underestimate. For instance, we've won, quite rightly, a new hospital on the back of, on the back of the Newtown work and the population increase. It's four hundred million pounds worth, it's four hundred million pounds worth of quite high end construction. That is massive, just in anybody's books. So it, it's, it's that, it's that level of, that, that will be repeated over and over and over again, whether it's schools, whether it's, whether it's health centres, whether it's, it's, it's community centres, that, 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 that level. There's a generation opportunity. So I, I do think it, it's how it, also the thing about any strategy is how it links together and becomes greater than the sum of its parts, as opposed to just saying A, B and C are great. It's how A, B and C link to, to create that, to create that sort of investment opportunity as a pool. So I think, I think A is fine. B, I think we will change to endorse the South Midlands Economic Growth Strategy Draft Direction and ask, and ask the Business Board Chair to take that back for further development on the points discussed, if that's okay, Jason? Brilliant, thank you. Is that, is everybody happy with that? Jim?
Thank you, Chair. Just to say, if anybody saw the first draft of this document, it has moved a long way and the direction is good. But I also take on all the points that have been made and obviously Jason adds as well. We've talked about this in the past, so I think that's a good, clear direction now. Thank you.
Now, brilliant, I think that's what we're here for, isn't it? Of those sort of value added discussions. Go on, I therefore, before we move on to the next item, I need to resolve that the press and public be excluded from the meeting by virtue of paragraph three of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy two, schedule twelve A, as we are going to hear the next update in a private session, obviously, because there is, there is some private and sensitive information in it. And they're going to therefore stop the recording, but highlight for those who might be watching, the next date of the next board meeting will be the twenty seventh, twenty seventh of January, twenty twenty six.